I know how excited everybody is to be at a town council meeting, but truth be told, we're going to start this meeting for the first hour for a very special occasion, a long-awaited awards recognition night. I know the council's beaming with pride for these individuals, so I'd like to turn the ceremony over to our town manager, Tony Marino.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. And thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. We appreciate it. June 26, 2021 will forever be etched in our memories as a day of tragedy, marked by the loss of two cherished residents, Ramona Cooper and David Green. In the wake of this horrific event, our community rallied together in an extraordinary display of support for the Cooper and Green families, as well as for our courageous first responders. Tonight, as we gather to reflect on this incident that has now been officially cleared by the District Attorney's Office, we have the opportunity to express our gratitude and pay tribute to those who played a pivotal role in swiftly containing the situation, ensuring that one individual's hateful actions did not inflict further harm. Before we invite our esteemed guests to the podium, this whole sitting to my right, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge some of the distinguished guests from our armed services that are here, the distinguished guests from Sergeant Patano's Army Unit. We have Major Ricardo Tolentino with the Executive Officer, the 325th Military Intelligence Battalion; Second Lieutenant Malina Schilling, Executive Officer, Bravo Company, the 325th Military Intelligence Battalion; Second Lieutenant Peter Cadili, Platoon Leader, Bravo Company, 325th Military Intelligence Battalion; First Sergeant Koi Kohli, Bravo Company, 325th Military Intelligence Battalion; and Army Reserve Officer Ian Edmiston, Bravo Company, 325th Military Intelligence Battalion. We are deeply grateful for the presence and service of these honorable individuals, whose commitment to duty and sacrifice embody the values of our nation's armed forces. Their presence here tonight serves as a reminder of the unwavering dedication and selflessness displayed by our military personnel each and every day. Thank you for your service and your unwavering commitment to protecting our community and our country. And now, without further ado, I want to pass this over. We have a few speakers, and then we will get to the awards. So up first, I would like to welcome our state senator, Lydia Edwards, for a few words.
Good evening, everyone. I have the distinct honor to be here tonight to not only acknowledge service, but to also acknowledge service of my fellow service members, as I've joined the National Guard and I'm a JAG unit. So I salute you, and I literally salute you. There's a special call to duty that a lot of people have when they sign up to serve, whether it's as a first responder, police officer, firefighter. It's a special kind of duty, and it's something that you either get it or you don't. And tonight, we're acknowledging those people who have it in their heart to rise in moments of chaos, to rise in moments of turmoil, and to rise, and in some cases, risk their own lives for others. It's an award that we're giving tonight, but honestly, there's nothing that we could truly give to understand that potential sacrifice you were willing to make and what these officers and civilians were willing to make on that day. There was hatred. There was violence. And the natural reaction to that is to run away. The natural reaction to that is to duck for cover. And what we're rewarding and acknowledging is those who stood up and ran towards the chaos, to protect all of us, to protect people you didn't even know. I have such great affirmation for that, because I can tell you, I don't know what I could do in those moments. But I bet for these officers and those civilians, they didn't know either. It's a quick decision. It's a moment's notice. It's God in front of you and behind you, and you move. Tonight, we're acknowledging that. And I want to, first of all, say, the fact that we even had to vet if it was the right thing to do, well, it's the process we have right now. But you should know the entire time, and never was there ever a question in any of our hearts about what needed to be done and who had to do it. I am grateful. I am thankful. And I just want to say, we'll be giving out citations, but from the bottom of my heart, God bless. Continue to fight and always serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Next up is our representative, Jeffrey Turco.
Thank you very much, Tony. Thank you, members of the council. Mr. President, Senator Edwards, always good to be with you. I see former council president Peter Gill in the back there. Peter, good to join, good to be with you. There's so much that could be said about today, and, you know, we harken back to the events of that dark day. And I remember sitting in my house, you know, many of you know I have a whole bunch of children, and so I'm in my house with my wife and my kids, and all of a sudden, the phone's blowing up with text messages and Facebook and Twitter and all this crazy world we live in of social media, where, you know, there's a mass shooting, dozens of people are dead, shelter in place, you know, it was just total chaos. There was a, you know, the view of a lot is that this crazed killer was heading towards the temple to try to wreak havoc on our Jewish brothers and sisters here in this town, and that Dave Green and Ramona Cooper were unfortunately, they were part of his hate, but they were also sort of victims of circumstance of having, sort of being in the wrong place at the wrong time post that, the collision. But a couple of points, you know, in today's society, I think, and I'll sort of go off script a little bit, you know, we've gotten into this internet age, where everybody walks around, you see something bad happening, you don't go and help the woman who's being abused on the street. You videotape it, you post it on Facebook, you show it on Twitter. It's disgusting. It's vile. And you know what? I look at this event, and I say, Winthrop residents that were there, Winthrop police officers that were there, you know, police officers from other, I was talking to, you know, I'll name Robin Pemba was at his house, sitting in his kitchen when he heard gunfire. He was in his shorts and his T-shirt, grabbed his weapon, called the department, said, "I'm responding to the scene." You know, brave men and women went, and they didn't do the sick, disgusting thing with, "Let's put this online. Let's put this on TV." They went out and they tried to save their fellow men and women in this town. And it really is a tribute to the people that we have in Winthrop, that really go above and beyond, that truly love one another, love their neighborhood, love their community. And, you know, it's been a difficult time for police officers over the last, and we've talked about police reform, and we've seen some of the horrible things that have happened around the country. You know what? Those things don't happen here in Massachusetts, and they don't happen here in Winthrop. Why? Because we have some of the best-trained law enforcement officials in the entire country here in Massachusetts. And we saw, again, we're recognizing civilians for what they did, because they did the right thing, and they responded, and they tried to help. But we look at our law enforcement officials, and the fact that they had to wait this long to be officially exonerated is a sad part of the, it's a necessary process, but it's a sad part of the process. But the fact that, you know, these brave officers went and without hesitation, knowing, seeing the carnage that had happened on the street, not really knowing what was going on, they did their duty, because they were trained, because the town of Winthrop puts the money and the resources to making sure that we have the best-trained officers. It really is a testament to all of the council members who make sure when they're doing the budget, and in a small town like this, it's difficult to allocate money for training, and it's difficult to allocate money for your police, but you guys do that. And really, the council over the last number of years deserved a lot of credit for making sure that the department has had the resources. Chief Delahanty, you're getting ready to retire. The fact that you've put so much time and effort into making sure that your department had the money and the resources, and make sure that your officers are trained, so that when, you know, the rubber meets the road, you know, we could put our heads on the pillow, knowing that these guys and gals are out there on the street protecting us. And now, soon-to-be Chief Goodwin and Deputy Chief Romeo, again, longtime members of the department, working with their offices to make sure that this town remains the special place. And I can't say enough, he's not here, he's got a representative, but DA Hayden, you know, I mean, the guy is aces, the work that he does to make sure that we have true partnerships with the District Attorney's Office here in Winthrop and in law enforcement, to make sure that Suffolk County is getting safer by the day under his leadership. I just, there's so much I could say, and I'm sort of rambling on, but it's truly from the heart, thank you. We love you. We appreciate you. And for those of you in law enforcement and the military, may Saint Michael the Archangel always watch over you. God bless you all.
Thank you, Representative Turco. As the representative said, unfortunately, District Attorney Kevin Hayward could not be here tonight. However, he did send a staff member, I can't get the name here, sorry. I had Byron Knight here. We're honored to have Byron Knight, his second assistant, who's going to come up to the podium.
Good evening, all. As was mentioned, Kevin can't be here today, but he does send his well wishes. My name's Byron Knight. I'm the Second Assistant District Attorney for the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office. And on behalf of Kevin Hayden and the entire office, I am honored to be here tonight with you. Just a few months ago, our office released a report, which was mentioned, showing that not only the actions of the Winthrop police on the scene that terrible day justified, but they were heroic and essential, and almost certainly prevented further injuries and casualties from occurring. All of us in our office express our deepest gratitude to the officers and civilians being honored tonight. The report also reminded us once again how Winthrop turned itself into a model, a model of how community can bond and progress after tragedy and heartbreak, a model for how neighborhoods can reject the twin diseases of ethnic bias and racial hatred, a model for how unity and affection can triumph over hate and hostility. Thank you again for your strength, your service, and your perseverance.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Now, we're going to pass it over to our council president, Jim Leteri, who is going to be giving out the civilian awards this evening.
Thank you. The council does have two civilian awards to give out, but before I do that, I just want to say, the love in this room is genuine. We can't thank you all enough, all five of you, as well as the department. You make us so proud every day, and to do what you do, day in and day out, is so appreciated. We love you all. On behalf of the council, I would like to issue a civilian citation to Michael Mahoney. For bravery and civic duty, your bravery during this tragedy on June 26, 2021, will not be forgotten by our citizens. As for the concern you had with all involved, relaying information to our police officers during this tragedy, and statements to our investigators after this tragedy, was greatly appreciated. We wish you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors. Thank you, Michael. Again, for your bravery and civic duty, your bravery during this tragedy on June 26, 2021, will not be forgotten by our citizens. As for your concern you had with all involved, without concern for your own safety, you made sure of identifying and preserving evidence for the investigators. We wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors. Thank you so much.
to our police chief, Terrence Delahanty, and he will give out the last three awards.
Thank you, town manager Marino, and my deputy chiefs will be up here to assist me, Deputy Goodwin and Deputy Romeo. But before we start, I'd just like to say a few words. You know, we honor tonight those who ended and isolated the pattern of violence on that particular day. We do not operate in individuals. We operate as team members. And it's a lot of other people that also contributed that day that are not being recognized tonight, not because they're forgotten, and not because we're not thankful for their service and their commitment to preserving crime scenes, EMS and fire department, for their response, the public health department, for their rebuilding the community after that horrible night. It literally takes years to come back from a major tragic incident like we had. So the three people that we honor tonight are the representatives of the entire team, and they're the ones that were the first responders on the scene that isolated the continued threat on that night. So I first would like to call up, I'm a little jealous of this person, retired detective Don Armstead.
Detective Armstead's decisive actions in response to the crisis demonstrates exemplary bravery and commitment to the safety of the community. Despite being off duty and at home, Detective Armstead wasted no time in springing into action upon hearing the gunshots. Without hesitation, she activated herself and promptly made her way to the active scene. Upon arrival, Detective Armstead played a crucial role in securing both weapons found in the street, ensuring they did not pose any further threat to public safety. Additionally, she took charge of securing the crime scene, a critical task in preserving evidence and facilitating the investigations. Furthermore, Detective Armstead's efforts in identifying and interviewing witnesses proved invaluable in piecing together the events leading up to that incident. For her exemplary bravery and selfless dedication to duty, I am honored to present Detective Armstead with the Gallantry Star. This prestigious award is preserved for individuals who demonstrate exceptional courage in the face of significant danger to themselves or to the community. Detective Armstead's actions exemplifies the highest standards of bravery and professionalism within the Winthrop Police Department. Thank you for your service, and thank you.
There'll be plenty of opportunity afterwards for pitches with anyone, any of the awardees would like to have pitches with. I'd like to call up now Officer Carlos Dutra.
Officer Dutra's swift departure from his assigned post as desk officer to respond to the unfolding crisis, arriving on scene as the second officer on scene. Officer Dutra wasted no time in assessing the situation and taking decisive action. Despite escalating danger, he played a crucial role in ensuring there was no further threats present, and assisted in subduing the subject, who was displaying a shocking level of resistance despite being shot four times. Officer Dutra's quick thinking and decisive actions, including his request for medical attention and mutual aid, were instrumental in managing the situation effectively, securing the crime scene, and providing vital information to his supervisors. Officer Dutra's conduct reflects the highest standard of police professionalism and dedication to the community as a whole. His selfless actions in the face of grave danger are deserving of recognition. Therefore, it is with great pride and admiration I present Officer Dutra with the Gallantry Star. This prestigious award is bestowed upon individuals who demonstrate distinguished bravery in the face of significant threat to the community or themselves. Officer Dutra's proactive response and exceptional performance in managing the crisis meets the criteria for this honor. Thank you for your service.
So now, I'd like to call up, because leaders go last, Sergeant Nick Patano.
In response to what he believed to be a mere motor vehicle accident, Sergeant Patano found himself facing a dire situation transforming, transformed swiftly into a double homicide by an armed perpetrator. With David Green and Ramona Cooper's lives taken, and two more civilians in imminent danger, Sergeant Patano acted decisively despite the grave risks. He advanced towards the arms sale, and repeatedly demanding the weapons be surrendered. When the subject aimed his firearm at Sergeant Patano, he was left with no alternative but to employ lethal force, thereby neutralizing the threat. Without hesitation, Sergeant Patano transitioned to providing lifesaving aid until EMS and Winthrop firefighters took over that aid. Sergeant Patano's conduct epitomizes exemplary service, marked by an unwavering commitment of selflessness. By his courageous intervention, he secured the safety of the entire community, averting what could have been an even greater tragedy in Winthrop. Your actions reflect the pinnacle of law enforcement professionalism and dedication. Therefore, it is my honor to bestow upon you the Medal of Honor, the highest accolades attainable by the Winthrop police officer. This medal recognizes outstanding bravery exhibited in the face of imminent peril. With full awareness of the risks involved, your exceptional command and control during the crisis epitomizes the spirit of this distinguished recognition. Thank you for your service.
on our plaque, so he can have it for his awards room. There's been many. Well-deserved, I must say. But also, I think I left probably the most important comment of the night. You know, we have the support of our colleagues at work, and peers at the fire department, EMS, and DBW, and the health department, the councilors, and the town manager for providing financial support, and anything, you know, the checkbook was open, anything we needed during that emergency was guaranteed to be provided for the community and for the departments. But I think, most importantly, when we go home at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, we don't go home to an empty home. Those are the people that we neglect the most, that we feel are recognized the most, and are the people that probably take it on the chin the most. So we thank your families, something over the 26 years, or 20, almost 32 years now, that I probably haven't recognized enough, is my family. And that's one thing you can learn from me, is recognize your family. They're the ones that get you through the worst times of your life. Thank you to all the family that are here.
Over to the town manager. Thank you, Chief. Well said. This is going to conclude our ceremony. We do have some refreshments in the other room, and certainly an opportunity to take pictures and whatnot. The council will take a 15, 20-minute break, and then they'll resume their meeting. But welcome everybody to come next door and have some, take some pictures, and I congratulate everybody, and thank you again. We appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Council is in recess till 7:00. The council meeting is back in session. We have minutes from February 20. They have been circulated. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor DeMarco, second by Councilor Tassaneri. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the State of the Town Address by the council president, which is hence why I'm up at this podium. "To the residents of our great town, the town of Winthrop Charter gives the council president not only the obligation, but the great privilege and pleasure to address the town yearly, in an effort to reflect over the past 12 months, as well as clearly define our goals for the upcoming year. No such address could begin without first offering my sincere thanks and appreciation to all of our department heads, their staffs, as well as our appointed boards and committees. Without them, our town could not function. They provide us comfort and safety. They educate our children and grandchildren. They keep our town clean and inviting. They provide us with attractive and welcoming parks and recreation spaces. They maintain our infrastructure and streetscapes. In short, they facilitate in providing us a community which I am extremely proud, appreciative, and honored to call home. Over the past year, we have been quite busy focusing on many items that we have either enacted or hope to enact shortly. These items include GFOA budget format, Revere Street Tips project, the assessors' office, flooding issues, new website, old middle school site, proposed new fire station, a public safety building, veterans' road fire, and of course, 3A zoning." Last year, fiscal '24 was the first year we incorporated the GFOA budget format. It is easier to navigate, very much transparent, and it has been instituted relatively seamlessly. Tony has brought us so much to our town, and this budgeting process is just another of his accomplishments. As we prepare for fiscal '25 and the budget, we will once again be very transparent with basically weekly meetings of the Finance Commission, which are really quite eye-opening. They will meet almost with every department head, along with multiple meetings with the schools. These meetings are all open, and I encourage the public to participate and understand where your tax dollars go. Including our enterprise funds, our town budget will be north of $70 million. As the weather starts to warm up, so too will the Revere Street Tip Project. You will begin to see some construction mobilization in the McGee's Corner section, which is where the project will begin. But you will not see much disruption, if any, until early May. This project will include complete drainage work along the new streets, along with new streets, sidewalks, some streetscape, and a bike lane. This project will take multiple seasons to complete. This project will take multiple seasons to complete. The Tips Project is not a town project, it is a state project, a MassDOT project. Tony has been able to coordinate with the state to have two meetings, enabling residents and business owners to voice their concerns, along with getting answers to questions related to school opening in September, among other things. These meetings are tentatively scheduled for Saturday morning, the 23rd of March, and Tuesday night, the 26th of March. And they will be held at the DeLeo Senior Center. Before this project gets into full swing this spring, you will also see the final paving on Revere Street section from Crest Ave to the Revere Line, along with the paving of Crest Ave, Highland, and Grovers. This should begin at the beginning of April and should be done within three, three or four weeks or so. Another goal of the council last year, which was accomplished by Tony, has been staffing along with bringing everything back in-house at the Assessors’ Department. With new hirings and little reshuffling, the Assessors’ Office has been able to facilitate in increasing new growth numbers to levels we have not seen. Their diligence and hard work have definitely shown results, which we will continue to see as fiscal ’24 ends and fiscal ’25 begins. We have seen basically a doubling in new growth, which has added almost $300,000 to the income sheet. We may not have had, or at least at this point, fingers crossed, a snowy winter at all. However, we have had our share of flooding, especially in the usual areas such as Morton Street, Tilestone and Girdlestone, Delby’s Corner and the Pico Park area. We have initiated with a vote of the council to begin survey work and engineering for the Tilestone, Girdlestone, and Pico areas. We have also applied for a federal grant for $650,000, which should help complete all the engineering work for those areas. We have also received an MVP grant for design work along with feasibility study, looking at the options for the Morton Street area. Most likely, it will involve some sort of living levees, which will help keep the water out of the area. We are also happy, very happy, to announce that after much work and design, we have a new town website up and running. I encourage you all to take a look and navigate around it. It is much more user-friendly and we are hoping you will be pleased. We continue to work on multiple fronts concerning the old middle school site. There will be a much anticipated proposal from Edge Sports, who responded to the RFI. They are expected to be coming to present by the end of April. We are looking into the possibility of building a new rink along with a relatively small 55 and over complex, keeping our options open. Last year, we brought forward a plan for a new fire station, which was defeated in November. We have not given up the fight for a new fire station, as well as the possibility of a public safety building. We learned much from our efforts last year, and I believe the most important item we learned is that the town does support building a new fire station. They understand that our two facilities are in deplorable condition and that we need a new station along with our own ambulance service. We will be reporting back with a presentation in relatively short order with multiple options for you to consider, and we hope to have another ballot question ready for the fall. Also, in 2023, we had a horrific fire on Veterans Road. We were able to successfully relocate 60 families displaced by the fire, and I must commend Town Manager Marino, along with the CLER team and Meredith Hurley. The town really came together and we, as a council, are very thankful. I have been an elected officer for the town of Wintup for 21 years and oddly enough, honestly, do not consider myself a quote-unquote politician. I believe you need to be yourself, especially in a small town. The job of a locally elected person is to look out for his or her town, do what they feel is in the best interest for their town. Be honest, do your homework, listen to your constituents, help inform those constituents of the pluses and minuses of whatever issue you might be working on, and do what’s best. To me, it’s pretty simple. I say that as I go on to the next issue, which is the hot topic of the year right now, and that’s 3A zoning. It has been discussed every which way. People have learned more about zoning in the last several months than they have most of their lives, but it is extremely important. It potentially affects every aspect of our lives. It affects the type of community you want to strive to be. In this situation, the state is mandating that basically every city and town within the 128-495 corridor, except for Boston, zone for either 10%, 5%, or 25% within their communities. In our case, that number is 10% or 882 units. The purpose, they say, is to create more housing and increase density. The reason, to me, is questionable. It is set out to be a one-size-fits-all mandate when, in my opinion, it really shouldn’t be. Wintrop, like everybody else, will grow. We do it through redevelopment because we really don’t have any unused land, but we have understood for years that we should prepare ourselves for Wintrop’s needs and Wintrop’s future. This is why, over the past 15 years or so, we’ve been way ahead of the state. We have zoned the center in which is now called the CBD or the Center Business District. We have zoned certain areas in a waterfront district. We have zoned Shirley Street. None of this was done lightly, and certainly none was done without transparency. There was an incredible amount of public meetings, debates, forums, and such to come to a decision. That was what’s best for Wintrop’s future, and we did it. Over the past 15 years, we have zoned for well over 800 units. We are a very, very dense community. The state wants to increase density. The state average for density is 900 people per square mile. Suffolk County is the most dense county in the state with a density average of a little over 6,000 people per square mile. Wintrop’s density is a little over 12,000 people per square mile. Commonwealth of Massachusetts has 351 cities and towns, and I see Wintrop as the fourth most dense behind Somerville, Chelsea, and Cambridge. I would like the state to be fair and reasonable to Wintrop, recognize all the work that has been already done in our town, support the citizens of Wintrop, realize that the state average of single-family homes in a city and town is over 70% and that in Wintrop, we’re at 36%. Wintrop has done everything the state is trying to do. We just did it ahead of the curve, and we should not be penalized for that. I encourage people to keep asking questions and understand the issues as best they can. In the end, I am focused and have always been on what’s best for our town regardless of the issue, whether it be zoning, infrastructure, education, public safety. Whatever that issue is, it will undoubtedly have ripple-down effects and consequences, such as effects on education, space in schools, public safety, financial ramifications, traffic and such. I feel one of the most crucial jobs we do as councilors is to try and best evaluate these consequences and effects, educate the public, and make decisions that will have the best potential incomes, outcomes for our residents. Our town is not just a place on a map, it’s a living, breathing testament to the strength, resilience, and collaborative spirits that define us. We recognize that challenges exist, but let me assure you, they are stepping stones, not stumbling blocks. By facing them head-on with the same determination that define us, we will overcome and emerge even stronger. We have a unique blend of backgrounds, talents, and perspectives that I feel make our town resilient and dynamic. As I conclude, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to each of you. Thank you for being the heart and soul of our town, for making it a place we are proud to call home. May our town continue to thrive and may each, each of you feel the pride that comes from being an integral part of this extraordinary community. The state of our town is strong and is because of each and every one of you. May God bless the town of Wintrop, and thank you very much.
Moving on. Lost my agenda. We have, we’re very fortunate to have Kim Dimes as the Chairwoman of Conservation Committee here with us tonight to do a brief presentation on DEP Proposed Draft Amendment Updates. Kim? Sure.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you, Council President Wintery. I’m Kim Dimes. I am the Chairperson of Wintup Conservation Commission. And just a brief background on the commission, in Massachusetts, Conservation Commission’s authority comes from several sources. The Conservation Commission Act, which is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, for open space protection, and the Wetlands Protection Act, which is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40, for protecting wetlands and waterways, and the Home Rule provisions of the state constitution for non-zoning wetlands bylaws, which we have in our town of Wintup bylaws, Chapter 12, Section 40. Our commission consists of seven members that are appointed by, for three-year terms, appointed by Town Council President. We’re responsible for protecting the land, water, biological resources of the town of Wintrop, and process applications for permits to do work in and near wetlands, floodplains, banks, beaches, and surface waters. I come before you this evening to briefly discuss the proposed Mass Department of Environmental Protection regulation changes to land subject to coastal storm flowage, commonly referred to as LSCSF. These proposed changes are to the 310 CMR 10.0 Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act regulations. They have extended the formal written comments from the public to April 30th, 2024, 5:00 PM. And if you’d like to comment on these changes or proposed amendments, you can email dep.wetlands@mass.gov. You must include Wetlands-401 Resilience Comments in the subject line, and that information I will give to the council and hopefully we can get put on, put up on the website. There’s three handouts that I’ve, I don’t have them to put up to everybody, but basically it’s understanding coastal flood zones, the comparison of the land subject to coastal storm flowage currently, what the proposed, proposed amendments are, and also the proposed draft for the 10th edition of the Residential Building Code, which is also up for amendments. And so they, pretty much the two will coincide with each other. And then also, there’s a handout for storm storage flow channelization, which has become a problem in coastal communities. And these three handouts, I’ve sent to Tony and Jim, and hopefully we can get those up on, on the website, the new website, which, congratulations, by the way, it looks great. Basically, to determine if someone’s in a flood zone, first of all, you need to go to the FEMA.gov flood maps, and you, and you have to submit your address and you download and you upload, you know, it’s, you can download it, you can print it, but basically it gives you the velocity zone that you’re in or not in. So there’s, there’s severe impact zones, there’s impact zones, and then there’s no impact zones. And basically, once you determine whether you’re in a V-zone and an A-zone, which are definitely, which will be affected by these, which are actually are protected currently under the Wetlands Protection Act, but will be more so with these amendment changes. And then an X-zone, which is basically is landward of the 100, 100-year flood zone and you really don’t have very much to worry about, fortunately. But the impacts are very extreme, and not to go into too much details because it’s kind of confusing, you know, depending on where you’re at and what flood zone you’re in, but I really urge people to definitely at least find out what, if you are in a flood zone, what, what velocity zone you’re in, so you know what you’re up against if you want to do work to your home and what the course of construction will be entail. And in addition to that, I urge you to, if you are interested in doing work, to use the resources that DEP and FEMA has because they’re amazing. I mean, there’s, I was just in a workshop with DEP and they were explaining that FEMA, if you want to put your house, if you’re in a high-velocity zone and want to put your house up on stilts, you can get, FEMA will pay for 75% of the costs, and that’s true, true numbers. So these are things that I just would like to urge the residents of, of the town of Wintrop to look into. And, you know, no time better than the present. I know we’ve had some severe flooding in town, but it really is only tidal flooding and not, not a big storm. And so if we were ever to have another blizzard of ’78, I’d hate to say the, you know, what the results would be. If you can think back to ’78 and just compound that to, I don’t know how, how much more because we’ve really taken away a lot of the barrier, beach points surely, and there’s not as much protection for that, that water to, you know, ebb and flow. So anyway, I just wanted to express my concern and that I really hope that people take this seriously, especially if you’re in a flood zone, look into it, and please comment back to DEP. They’re looking for positive, and they’re looking for feedback in general, whether it’s positive or negative. They really, they’re really looking for some feedback, and it’s, it’s a lot to take in. And so with that, I think that’s all I have. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Kim. We appreciate you taking the time to come. It’s incredibly useful information. Any councilors, any questions at this time? Counselors?
Thank you.
You’re welcome.
Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
I’m glad this is going to be up on the website because I’m trying to quickly take notes.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely. Definitely will forward everything. We’re hoping to, that’s the other thing too, as, as a Conservation Commission, all the commissioners, we are really striving to educate the residents of Wintrop, so that it’s not such a surprise when they come before Conservation, or realize that they have to come before Conservation, that they know the course of what they have to, you know, do to, to make everything, you know, because not only are there FEMA regulations, but there’s Building Co. regulations, and then there’s the Wetlands Protection Act and the Coastal Zone Management. So there’s a lot of, of Ts to cross and Is to dot when it comes to building in, in a wetland or a flood zone.
And I have a feeling that a lot of us don’t even know if we’re in a floodplain.
Exactly. I agree. That’s why I’m here.
When you hear that a stream is running under your house, that’s a surprise.
Right. And there are, actually, there are some intermittent streams in Wintrop, so that is, yeah. There’s a website for that too.
Really?
Yes, yeah. The US Forest Service, they have, if you go to USFS, they have an intermittent stream map that you can pull up. Yep.
Thank you so much.
Another great resource. Okay. You’re welcome.
Any other questions? Counselors?
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
For quite the timely appearance.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
You probably saw about a month ago, we had a council meeting full of folks who were impacted by that.
100%.
That round of floods, the latest round of floods, because it’s happening constantly. So I just wanted to say thank you. Please do forward us whatever materials you have, and, and don’t trust just posting to a website. Please, I’m sure you and Tony will make sure we, we get it on hand. All I’ll say is that there, there should be plenty of action coming from not just the town council, but other organizations at the state level, as well as an incredible amount of resources we have just in the community of Wintrop with folks who have incredible expertise in climate action and all things resiliency. So we have a huge opportunity and a huge need to act now, so thank you very much for being a part of that.
You’re welcome. Thank you. Yeah, and also, just on that note, the Mass DEP, I can’t express enough how much of a great resource they are. I mean, we have, we have circuit riders that, that are at our disposal, that, not just as, as a commission, but as residents, you know, that, you can email them and they’re instantly are back, you know, right back to you with whatever technical advice you need and guidance, and I can’t say, and it’s all free, and, you know, you’re getting it from the source and it’s, it’s huge.
And thank you as well to the folks at Coastal Zone Management, who have been very helpful. Some of us on the council are in touch with folks from there to help us with climate action planning. That’s a fantastic organization.
Awesome. Great.
Any other questions? All right, thank you again, Kim.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a citation to award, and we have a former Consulor now, Rich Fusillo, who is stepping down as a Consulor, and, you know, Rich is an incredible young man. For 24 years of age, he has accomplished so much and we are so thankful. He joined the council a couple of years back, and what did I do for his first task? I made him Chair of Finance Commission, which is incredible. It really is. I know I was on the council six years before I was able to do that, and, and he did it at 22, 23. He’s an incredible young man. I can’t thank him enough for his dedication to the council, the service to the council, bringing that youth and enthusiasm that, with no disrespect to anyone here, that we sorely lack at times. You know, Rich is, this is not an easy decision for Rich, but Rich has been fortunate enough to buy a piece of property outside the town. We wish him nothing but the best. So on behalf of the town, be it known that the Wintup Town Council hereby offices, congratulations to Richard Fusillo, Town Consulor, Precinct 1. The Town Council and the citizens of Wintup, especially those living in Precinct 1, to like to thank you for your service to our community as a Town Consulor. We wish you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors, given this 12th day of March 2024 of the Wintup, Massachusetts. Signed by Jim Wintery, Town Consul. Signed by General Terry, Town Council President, and all members of the council. Thank you so much, Rich. So just a brief statement in regards to that, now we have an opening on the Town Council. So we have an opening in Precinct 1. Obviously, a applicant must be a living member of Precinct 1, living in Precinct 1. And living would be obviously helpful at times, but, so someone living within the Precinct 1 boundaries. We will be taking letters, emails of interest or letters of interest or phone calls of interest to start the process. This will take a couple of cycles. We will have all interested parties attend the council meeting or to hear questions from councilors. Ultimately, it will be a vote within the council. And so we encourage you to take part. There is so much going on within our town and it is great to get involved. So again, Precinct 1, anybody from Precinct 1 interested in being, having a seat at the table, please feel free to email us. All right, public hearing, we have none. Public comment, first round of public comment. Going once, going twice. Okay, we will have another round of public comment later in the meeting. Correspondence, Denise.
Yeah, we had Allison Casey-Dur. She just wrote opposing the MBTA 3A zoning. Donna Riley, she was reviewing some grants and sent some grant info available for our town to apply for. Alyssa Jackson, also a member of the Planning Board, would like the Planning Board, the Town Council to work together to review the MBTA 3A zoning information.
Thank you. Committee reports. I do not believe we have any committee reports right now. School Department report, School Department meant last evening. There was a brief meeting. We did discuss, as we will at probably every meeting over the next couple of months, the fiscal '25 budget. They are hard at work at that and hopefully we'll have some sort of working draft by the end of March, early April. There was also discussion and a vote taken to add one half-day for the elementary schools, K to 5, this year, June 5, giving the teachers the opportunity to look at new ELA programs for next year. So that will be a half-day, K to 5, June 5, Wednesday. Town Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just as you mentioned in your State of the Town report, we do have community meetings coming up with regard to the Revere Street TIP project. Members of Mass DOT, CHA, and our contractor, along with myself and Director Calle will be there. We do have them set up for March 23, which is a Saturday, at 9:00 a.m. They'll be held in this building at the Senior Center. And also Tuesday, March 26, at 6:00 p.m. to address questions, go over schedule, what we'll be doing moving forward with the two-week look ahead and what people can anticipate as the project begins.
And Tony, that's here.
Yes, at the Senior Center, yep. We are diligently working on the capital plan and the budget. Met with the Capital Assets Committee just to go over the schedule and the process. And I have a meeting with Council Duras and Council Munson upcoming in and over the next three or four weeks to go over the capital plan. And also, I'll be meeting with the new Chair of Finance to review the budget process as we move forward and to get FY '25 approved. We're also working with KBA to fine-tune some of the pricing for three, as the Council President talked about, some different options for fire station locations to kind of prep for survey questions and things like that as we move forward, getting ready for the fall as we, our Conservation Commission Chair referenced flooding issues. That's, you know, one of the challenges, right? With the sites, you know, any of the sites we pick, whether the old ones, the middle school site, you know, one of the reasons we picked the Wazworth site in the beginning was because it was out of the flood zone. So dealing with the flood zone and some of those issues on the sites will be difficult, but we're taking a look at all of that. And we'll have something to report back to the council shortly. As many may or may not know, and I know the council knows, but the general public may not know, our police chief is retiring in July. We did interviews of the two deputies, as I promised, and I am pleased to announce that Deputy Chief John Goodwin will be our chief as of April 1. There'll be some transition between, Cherry will be taking some time, but there'll be some transition with the outgoing chief and the incoming chief. And John is certainly qualified, you know, 30-plus-year career between Revere and Winthrop, so he has the experience and we're happy to have him onboard, so. I did receive notification personally, I will say, from Congresswoman Clark. She called me to let us know that the $125,000 that she earmarked in the budget for us, in the FY '24 budget, which has still yet to be approved, but they're working on it. At the federal level, we did make it out of the House for approval, so that 125 is still in place. It's for the E.B. Newton Building. We're doing some upgrades to the kitchen there and some other improvements on the building. It'll really help the clear team and have some better facilities and whatnot as they do their great work in that building. So we're looking forward to that. And as some may know, and I wanted to announce, I did receive notification about, last Monday, Rachel Kelly, our town planner, is moving on for another position. So we'll look to either fill that position or possibly maybe change the title a little bit and come back to the council with some new plans. But we're working hard to do a transition. I've been actively involved in a lot of what Rachel does, so I'll pick up the slack in the interim and then we'll make sure we keep everything rolling until we can get that position filled, so. And with that, I will certainly open it up to the council for questions.
Thank you, Town Manager. Actually, my question is for Steve Calle. Steve, with the crosswalk on Revere Street, when they redid the work, they took one of the lights of the crosswalk down, so it's only on one side now. Can we get the other side replaced? Thank you. That's it.
Counselor Swol.
I spoke to Tony about this before and it's, just the other day. So one of my constituents, several of the constituents from Precinct 4 are concerned about the park upon 14th. And I did go by, make sure that there is no gate there. There used to be a gate there.
Okay.
But there's a lot of kids that are spending their evenings there and nights and mornings. They're there. And they're, so the congregation is getting larger, as I understand it from several people that stay up, including myself. So I know that's something that you can look into.
Yes.
And I don't know how to bring these comments. Usually I just take them to Tony and perhaps that's more appropriate. This is one precinct. And so, but I did, I did want to appreciate, I did want to tell you in public, I so appreciate your returning my phone calls, answering my questions.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's really important that we find people that within the town that can help us. I don't know if this means more ad hoc committees where we can involve others as well as ourselves, maybe that's something that we can talk about because when you lay out the plan, there's a lot of work to be done. I don't know, even if we took everybody around the table, we haven't enough to do it. So the more we plan and the more carefully we plan, I think the better off we'll be and that we won't wear you out and you will still be talking by the end of all of our meetings. So, thank you.
Counselor Duras.
Counselor Munson, in, in his absence, he's out in California at the moment, being on the Capital Assets and Economic Development Committee with him, he asked me to just say what Tony just said, which is we do have three meetings coming up.
Right.
The first one is next week on the 19th at 5:30. That's going to be to review the past and proposed capital asset plan and call for input primarily from councilors first. And then we'll have a follow-up just two days later on the 21st. Same intent, except we are looking for input from residents of the community. And then March 26, we'll have a third meeting. So we're going to do three back-to-back where we'll review the revised capital asset plan based on what comes out of those meetings. So as a, as a newbie counselor to both that committee as well as the Finance Committee, which I now chair and have to follow in Mr. Fusillo's shoes, I'll just echo what Suzanne just said and thank you so much, Tony, for having answered all of our newbie questions up until now and all the ones that will come to you in the future. You're, you're a wonderful resource, so thank you.
No problem. Keep them coming.
All right, thank you. And let's go right back to Tony for the CDS, yeah?
They have not met since our last meeting. They're actually meeting tomorrow night. So I should have an update next week.
Okay, great. Now, new spot on the agenda, update on policymaking committees. Board of Appeals met. They continued 50 Cliff Ave, addition of second unit, awaiting information from the project manager. And 82 Main Street is requesting change to an original decision made in 2013 to allow non-family members to stay an additional unit. This will be heard again with new information. The Planning Board has continuation of 40-hour Bank Street hearing. Conservation Committee, 108 Taff Ave, change of units, still awaiting information from Coastal Zoning for additional unit. And 56 Fairview Street, project in progress. This is an update and awaiting boring samples from the engineer. And I don't have anything from the Board of Health. We have Mr. Schmidt here, if you'd like to add something.
I did send the council, I believe, a update on a regulation we're doing on letter grading of restaurants. This is something that was proposed in the special debate that we do. Our Board of Health meeting is Thursday night, 6:30 in the hearing, we have a public hearing. We've also sending the information to all the food establishments in town to comment to the, to the end of the month. The draft regulation is very similar to what Boston is doing. We're all invited to comment.
Thank you very much. Old business. Town Council modifies Section 10.24.010 of Town Ordinance Schedule of One Way Streets, which is Somerset. And this is being sent back to rules and we also have to advertise for this. Fire station update we have received this evening. And you will be hearing more about fire station slash public safety over the next handful of meetings. Town Council to discuss Committee for Community Preservation Act. This is my bad, we've had a lot going on and this will be on the agenda again for the next meeting. New business, Town Council vote to appropriate free cash. This is going to be sent to Finance, but I will read the motion. It's a motion that the Town Council vote to appropriate certified free cash as listed below or take any other action relative thereto. Free cash and return earnings, retained earnings certification file is attached. So basically, we have a policy that we instituted several years back as to how we deal with free cash. And we have certain percentages going into each of the stabilization funds and then the remaining balance is used for specific projects or emergencies that we need before the year ends. So certified free cash, as of July 1, 2023, was $2,138,224. We had an opioid motion, which reduced that by $33,564 and the available amount to allocate is $2,104,659.90. So again, through our policy, we put a certain percentage into general stabilization, capital stabilization, and building stabilization. The general stabilization, capital stabilizations, those amounts are fixed. It's a certain percentage of each. On the building stabilization, it is set at 10%. However, if that brings the balance over $300,000, we cap it at a balance of $300,000. So if these motions do pass, the ending balance or the new beginning balance, I guess, and the general stabilization fund will be a little over $4 million and capital stabilization, a little under $3 million and building stabilization would be $300,000. And the ending free cash balance left to allocate would be $620,931.98. So that will be sent to Finance Committee. Town Council accept, new business again, Town Council accept recommendation of TSAC to add 15-minute parking zone on Walden Street. I believe this is down in the area of the Pizza Center and this will be also sent to Rules and Ordinance.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes.
How about the restaurant that's there on Walden?
Yes.
Are they, it's 15 minutes, you can park?
No, no, no. There are, I think what the motion is is to allocate a few spots for 15-minute parking. No, 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 you're not going to be able, there is great service at Volos. They're not going to get you out of there in 15 minutes.
I know. Well, it sounded that way.
All right, second round of public comment. If anybody does care to speak, we have a microphone in the middle here. You just please walk up to the microphone, state your name and precinct. Don't, everybody rush at once. We'll take them one at a time. All right.
Just a couple of comments.
Name and precinct, please.
Diana Vian's precinct 2.
Thank you.
Long anticipated sports center is a little bit of an overstatement. We're, we're looking forward to hearing from you and haven't been communicated to about in our precinct with respect to the old middle school. So just a note to you, Mr. President, Council Terry, Council President Terry. Also, the new fire station, Also, the new fire station, the jury is out on whether we need an actual new fire station, or whether we can revamp our existing fire station. I just want to caution folks with respect to 3A. There are lots of, there's lots of swirl, I would say, and there are lots of unwitting experts now, as a result of this, because we all care a lot about what's happening here, and we've dived in far too deep for our liking, and as a result, it's a detriment to this entire group of people if we're not utilizing the people that are in this town to the best of our ability in opening up the conversation. So to be clear, if we are minimizing the extent to which we are required to build new housing, that increases our density, right? Because that's the calculation. The more dense you are, the more housing you have to build. Any open space that we're zoning over is at risk. Any single-family homes we are zoning over is at risk. Any duplexes we are zoning over is at risk. There's a lot of complexity here, and there are a lot of people that know what they're talking about, and my suggestion is to just open the conversation. I think everyone is very well-meaning, and trying to do the best that they can, but the resources that we have here to guide you all are extensive and at your disposal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, public relations, again, contact our Town Clerk's office, there are board members needed. Also, as we stated earlier, we are looking for a Precinct One Counselor, so anyone living in Precinct One, please, if you have an interest, please email the council. Check out the new town website. It is, I mean, we joke about it a little bit, but it was much overdue, long overdue, and it is very user-friendly, and I think you're going to be very happy using it. Anyone on the council, Counselor Tessneri?
No updates.
Vice President Belcher? Counselor DiMarco?
I just want to say we had a great ceremony today. I was really proud to see our police officers and civilians recognized. I don't think it could be said enough how unbelievable of a job they did at an absolute awful time, so, I mean, I mean, I can't heap enough praise on them, so, that's it.
Counsel Swob.
First of all, I'm having a discussion on 3A for Precinct Four, or anyone else who wants to come at the Harvey Room tomorrow at 6:30, so please, if you have friends that are in Precinct Four or are, please have them come over, and we can have a discussion about where we are on this important topic. Secondly, in the spirit of Women's History Month, it did take the suffragettes about 72 years to get their right to vote, but really, we got the 19th Amendment, but we didn't get equal rights, because we never passed that law. Now, at least 70% of women are unsatisfied with the Dobbs decision, and feel it's an important point right now, that women do have equal rights under the law. So I suggest we pass an Equal Rights Amendment. And last summer, I decided that it was important to make a shirt that said something like that. This is our unfinished business. I did this shirt in 2018, and I redid it, because this is Women's History Month, I think it's important. We are facing a lot of equal rights issues right now, and I don't think we can forget it, and since it's our month, we need to take advantage of equality can't wait, and we need to finish what we started. Thank you.
Counsel DeRozan.
Two quick things. I'm going to dovetail on what you just said, Counsel Swob, if you wouldn't mind helping me. Women's Heritage Month, History Month, I should say. I did a little tour of some of my favorite women-owned businesses in Winthrop, and handed out these Women's History Month flags. You might have seen a few of them flying last week. So I just want to give a shout-out to all of the women in Winthrop, but particularly the women business owners. Every business that's opened is a little statement of hope, and I particularly love many of the establishments. Sometimes folks don't realize how many of the establishments in Winthrop are owned by women. There are several, from restaurants, to yoga studios, to a whole host of other businesses, so a shout-out to all of the women business owners in the town.
Amen.
And the last thing I will say, we have a chock-full march when it comes to history and heritage months, so the obvious one coming up would be Irish-American Heritage Month, with St. Patrick's Day coming up. I brought something. Yes, right on the wall. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Rob. This is my grandfather and grandmother, John and Eleonora Perry, and my grandfather was half-Portuguese and half-Irish, and we know our Irish family quite well. In fact, I brought with me a couple of mementos, because I know sometimes when we think about St. Patrick's Day and Irish heritage, some of us think about going to a pub or going to a pub crawl. I actually think about my family, and I think about my grandfather, who passed in 2011. I'll never forget the date, because he passed November 10th, 2011, in between my mother's birthday, his daughter's birthday, and my birthday. I wanted to play the lottery on 11/11/11, thinking I would win, but I was so distracted that day, with obvious reasons that I did not play. But I will just say really quick, this is his memoir that my grandfather wrote about his tour in the South Pacific in World War II. For the first time since his funeral, tonight, I thought especially in honoring our folks in uniform who served the town, that I thought for the first time since his funeral 12 years ago, I would break out his 754th Tank Battalion jacket that I keep in my house, and reminds me of him all the time. So a shout-out to my Irish grandfather, whose grandparents came to this country, from Kerry and County Longford in Ireland, and a shout-out and a celebratory appreciation of all of the Irish families of Irish heritage in this town, and Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Love it. Love it. Thank you, Counsel DeRozan Swob. Very well done. I do not have any show-and-tell stuff, but-
You can borrow mine.
Let's see. Now, I do want to thank our Town Clerk and her staff and her office for the election, the primaries last week. It's incredible, we had, I think roughly 35% was early voting or absentees, and I think that's going to continue as these elections continue. But thank you to you and your staff. They were seamless. And also, a shout-out, which I wanted to do in the School Department report, and I didn't, but one item that we did discuss also last night was the Boys Hockey Team. All the sports teams, Falls Team, Winter Teams have had a lot of success, and our Boys Hockey Team made it down to the Final Four, and they went down to Bourne, I believe, to play Dover Sherborne, and it was an incredible game. And I'll take a swipe at the MIAA for how they conduct playoff games, but to end it in a shootout is, after two overtimes, is not what I think is the best way to do it, but let the kids play. But they had an incredible season. Their coaches, Dale, Michael, Phil, and Chris, did a fantastic job. It's just a great bunch of kids, and I wish them all the best. I'm sure how, I know how disappointed the seniors are, but they have so much to be proud of, and the town is very proud of them, so congratulations to the Boys Hockey Team on a great year.
Yes, absolutely.
And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Counselor DiMarco, second by Vice President Belcher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.